We'll call the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, February 6th order. First thing on the agenda is to call.
Rosado, ATEP.
Here.
Start. Chancet, Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
Brown, O'Brien, Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Ewer.
Here.
Saron.
Here.
And McPadden.
Here.
Okay, we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. We do not have any minutes, I saw, so we will not do number two. Are there any items to be removed, added, or changed?
There are none.
Okay. Any matters from the public? Anybody want to address this? Carl?
Carl Dinwiddie, 1156 Pine Street. And I don't really have any matters other than say, "I'm glad to be here and I'm glad to have such an active, engaged council and the great job you do every time." Thank you.
Carl?
Next up will be a discussion on strategic planning. Start that.
Start that. Okay. At the meeting on January 23rd where we discussed the couple of proposals that we were considering for a firm to assist us with the project to review and revise our strategic plan, we decided in light of the financial situation posed by the closing of the Sam's Club and not knowing how that would impact our budget for this year, that we were not ready to embark on that project at this time, but that we did want to take a look at our strategic plan to determine whether it is adequate as it stands or whether some amendment needs to be made to it and to what degree an amendment needs to be made to it. Despite the fact that we're not able to engage in the project at the time that we had previously planned, I still think it's a very important discussion for all of us to have your decisions about the strategic plan directly influence how the staff members make plans for the objectives for their department and how they make recommendations to you as to how to allocate the resources in order to accomplish those objectives. And so I thought for tonight's discussion, maybe if each of you wanted to give your impression of our current strategic plan, I also have a couple of other documents in front of you. One is the values, vision, and mission statements for the city of Batavia. And I've also included just a suggestion of a framework for strategic planning. So in the event that you felt that you wanted to engage in a process to review and revise the current strategic plan, we could have discussions surrounding these topics. The review of our vision, mission, and values, and identification and assessment of a SWOT analysis, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And also if in the process we wanted to engage in consultation with other groups, their named staff, other governmental bodies, our non-governmental organizations such as Mainstreet, the Chamber of Commerce, residents, and the business community. And then finally, depending upon what you decide for the process, to establish a timeframe within which you'd like to see that that project completed and a strategic plan brought back to you for your approval and adoption. So I guess with that, I would turn it over to city council to, you know, do the review of that and tell me what you think about that framework and the timeline itself.
Anybody want to start?
I guess I can start. I'm not sure the best way to go about all this right now, first time obviously for in a city council environment. Is there something, if we looked at these pages, that we feel we're doing well already that we could kind of say, "Okay, let's kind of cross these off," or earmark these to say, "Okay, we'll keep doing these well," and others that we have tried but failed at? I mean, I guess I need a little bit more sense of where we're at or how we feel we're doing here.
It's a mixed bag there. So there are both things that are on here that have already been accomplished, but there are things that are on here that we don't have in place right now. So they remain, if those are items that you still, when you envision the future state of the city, if those are still things that you deem important, then they'll still be things that we try to accomplish as objectives.
Go ahead.
I guess what, one thing that I kind of found myself at least thinking that I kept coming back to as I was looking at the example one that you included in the email, but also, you know, the city of Batavia strategic plan is, you know, we're setting forth a strategic plan which is really our long-term outlook. But how do we, how do we, I guess I want to say, track progress towards that so that, you know, in two years' time, four years' time, if there's a different council here, we know that we are off the mark or we're on the mark? Like, are we publishing out any sort of KPIs to know? You know, we set out to do this, that, and this, and we are 25% there because we brought in two new retail businesses, but oh no, now we lost Sam's Club, so now we're actually back down to only 10%. You know, like, where do we have that kind of tracking for some of these? Or can we establish that kind of tracking?
We certainly can and we certainly should. Those are exactly the types of KPIs. I can go out there and take a look at KPIs that other municipalities have established, and certainly a lot of that looks like the day-to-day work, tracking the day-to-day work that's part of a department. But once the strategic plan is established, there should be at least quarterly reports on the progress to the goals and objectives that are established within the strategic plan. Because the idea here is this is supposed to be guiding our actions toward accomplishing the objectives. So any one of these should describe us something that we want to accomplish so that the report can show where we're at in terms of have we accomplished that or not.
I would think too, I love the idea of the quarterly, the quarterly report, but obviously this is going to, it needs to be part of a really more in-depth annual review as well. And probably around budget time, I would imagine, only because, and, you know, we do a great job of tying into what our goals are with the budget, but I think that would be a good time to do that. And what's interesting too is just, is looking at some of these things in here that, you know, talking about the availability of diverse housing choices, these are things that I think if we had those at the ready, we could be more informed as a council, especially when we have things in front of us, Campana, you know, whatever we have, you know, Prairie, what's the new one going into?
Prairie Commons.
Prairie Commons. And just knowing, having, having that inventory of housing stock at the ready to say, "Hey, does, you know, do we, is 200 townhomes, does that blow, does that skew us out in terms of what we're looking for balance-wise?" Right? So having, having the KPIs is a big deal. And I think when Sam's Club goes, you know, when something like that happens, we can immediately go back and say, "Okay, how does that put us out of balance?" We know from, you know, really, but it will probably have a little more definitive look and feel in terms of when we have those baseline measurements to go against. So, and interesting too, just looking at some of these things, strategic goals environmentally, you know, establishing the Fox River as a central feature of the community, yeah, I like that. And I think it's something that we've talked about kind of formalizing. It's in here, and we just, we need to get to it.
You know, can I pick up on what you just said? I guess if I have any suggestion of how we could strengthen this thing, I would like to see it have more commitment or forceful view of what we can do with the Fox River. And I'm thinking that what we're, hopefully want to enter into here is kind of a second phase of Fox River development. Needless to say, for eight years between 90 and 98, we had all these hundreds of people came down here and helped us build the riverwalk. I mean, that was a major coup for the whole community to have all that done with very little tax dollar put into it because it was all done by volunteers. Then everybody kind of patted themselves on the back as they should, and the whole thing just kind of was turned over to the Park District and the city. And, you know, we really haven't done much to go further with it until the last couple of years when we, we, the city, have bought a few things, Larson and Becker certainly being one of them, and took some pretty dynamic action, in my opinion, to kind of bring things into more of a focus. But I think we've got a ways to go, and I guess if I had any hope for the next couple of years, it would be that, you know, we've got some real great potential areas that once we get the new sewer plant constructed, the site of the old Shumway Foundry, which needs to be, you know, commemorated in some way that for 32 years, the Academy Award was made there, you know, just with a plaque or something. I mean, that should be on the bike trail so people driving through town can see what really happened there previously. Because we've got a, we probably have the greatest history story, the one that we should be proud of, the windmills, the Academy Award, you know, the, the Newton Wagon Company, there's a whole bunch of stuff here that really should be accented. And beyond that, I think that area where Shumway's Foundry is could turn into a real neat redevelopment project in the downtown, as can Larson and Becker property if other things happen and fall into place. And certainly the old Challenge Factory on North River Street, I think, could be a candidate in a few years for some major redevelopment. But if we've got a memento going here that we're constantly doing stuff to enhance the river and spice it up and pretty it up and make it more attractive, I suggest to you, and I'm being prejudiced here in my statement, but I think Batavia probably has, and I've had other people from outside the area come in and tell me this, we have probably the most, you know, dynamic stretch of Fox River to show people of any town on it as far as, you know, curves and natural beauty and just the, what's been done so far. I mean, go over and stand on the other side of the river in the Larson and Becker property and look at this building with the riverwalk around it and the work that's been done here. And then right south of us here, we, we lost this riverfront here when they tore the old Body Company down, and that's probably laying there in some form or fashion that could be reclaimed. And then we get south of the bridge and we got another pretty dynamic thing with, you know, what Batavia Enterprises has done to their building and what Kluber's done to his building and what's happened further down the, that's a pretty area, and we got the walk already there, the bike trail, whatever you want to say. Then you get into Island Park, you know, that's, that was built by the Civilian Conservation Corps in 1930 to '32, so that's, that's a very historic, you know, site in itself. But then we've had all that donation by Phil Elstrom to buy all those houses on South River Street, taking them down to further open up the view of the river. It's not done yet, but we've got a lot of things moving in that way, and if we can get this thing done, we'll have a riverfront here that'll be second to none, honestly. I mean, we'll have, that's the one thing, if you, if you go talk to bicyclists who are not from Batavia but are riding through here, that's the one compliment they fire at you right away. Boy, this is really a nice-looking area through here. But it's not all done yet.
Right. Do you think, to that point, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of moving parts within what you just said? And I think, I said this a few months ago, one of the things that I think we need to do within, you know, as part of the strategic plan overall, is having, is really articulating what that vision is. Break it down, you know, from, you know, from north to south, what we think we want to do with it, you know, and don't, don't leave anything unturned. I really think that that is something that we have to articulate in a document, you know, from, you know, from Challenge to the Depot Pond to the dam, which I know we want to avoid, but we need to talk about it, you know, all the, all the way down. And, you know, both sides of the river, obviously we have stuff that's not going to change. We have stuff that's great already, but going down, you know, we're talking about a cantilevered walk down, you know, by the wastewater plant. Include all that. Let's talk about it. Let's have it, let's get it down so we don't, "Oh yeah, what do we talk about? There's a piece here and a piece there." I would like to have that as a, as a document, as a formalized document that we can go back to as part of this.
Kind of like the action plan, which I feel this is missing.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's lack of specificity in this.
Right. And there's no way to judge where we're at in the plan if we don't have any type of actions to go along with the strategic plan.
Right?
And that's something that, you know, we've talked about time and time again since I've been on the council that we're really good about making a plan or saying this is what we think we ought to do, but we don't have a timeline or-
A financial aspect.
Action, right. And say, "Okay, we need $3 million to be able to do bank stabilization and we need, you know..."
And some of this stuff may not have a timeline or dollars against it, but we could have a vision and we need to break it down. So, I mean, because we're not going to be, we're not going to be able to do everything we want to do at once. It's going to take time.
We had said, where we were just talking about, when do we talk about this? And at budget time is the normal, the normal time that we do do that, and we do that every year. The only problem with that is, like was stated, we're not having any of the measures before that. We're not having any of the evaluations done before that. So like we all have in the corporate world, we have our yearly performance reviews. And you shouldn't go into your final for that year, nothing should be a surprise, because you should have had quarterly, you should have a midterm, and you should probably have monthly where you're meeting so that you can bring those things to change. And that goes to kind of what we were saying about knowing what the measures are and having them quarterly to know where are we with some of the things. And two of the things that I know we talk about every single year at budget time is just for example, the reserve policy. We know we've got a reserve policy and we have what that number is, but when it comes to budget time, we spend more time worrying about artificially figuring out what a new reserve balance is, that, no, we're not good with 120 anymore, when the policy is 80.
90.
90, sorry. That we're good with 90, that we should be able to have those discussions beforehand. But we should have been going into it knowing we might need a little more money this year. Should we be looking to reserves this year, or shouldn't we? It shouldn't be at the time, at budget time, where it's an artificially hastened process of making sure that we get the budget done so we're not having those good discussions beforehand. Just the same with another one, maintain an efficient and effective staffing level. We get here and go, "Well, sure, we want people, but how do we know we need people? How do we know that actually this department is needing because they're behind in this, they're behind in that?" And we should have that data beforehand. It's not micromanaging. It's to know going into budget time, we need someone in this department because they were this, their, their slows, their status level objectives were not good because they were this far behind because they needed one more person.
And I agree with, with having those measures in place. Typically, the objective is established and then you measure whether you're accomplishing the objective. So the, it's a matter of establishing what objectives are there that, that are accepted and agreed upon by everyone, and then we can measure our progress.
And that's why it goes, kind of goes back to, is it efficient and effective? Well, we don't know because it's another artificially hastened time. We need more people. Everybody wants to need more people because we didn't make up for the, you know, the recession. Well, technology and times have changed. Are some of those jobs, are some of those jobs obsolete now?
That's right.
That we now have different technology that I know Howard's been doing a great job trying to push out is some of the citizen interactive ones where we have faster resolutions that go to the right employee instead of going to this person and that person and having too many touches.
Right.
But that's still just a little bit out.
So going to that and using, and talking, I think where you're going is, you know, we have to have a timeline for, for this, how we review it quarterly, all that stuff.
Exactly.
So my question is, if we're going to be reviewing this on an annual basis, that has to then dictate what we're going to be doing for budget, right? So as we're, as we're looking at that, if I seem recall, like managers kind of go through their budget, they make all that, is that by August 1st?
It is in August and September that they're reviewing those, and then in October, all of the department heads and I and Peggy meet to finalize those numbers. And then we have our budget meetings in November, and the budget is adopted in December. So if the, if the objectives were established in June or July of every year, that could inform that process.
Yeah. And it might take away from some of the, this department's fighting with that department because they're knowing council is setting the direction that this department's getting a little more this year, and it's not going to be fair, and it can take some of the arm wrestling that goes on for money.
With respect to the timing, I mean, so one of the things that I'm, that I was very conscious about when I, when I saw this was, you know, the very first page, it talks about, you know, this is a five-year plan, right? Okay, let's assume we're in year four. What's our five-year plan from there? Right? So right there, it tells me that really this thing needs to be a living strategic plan that is constantly getting reassessed.
Exactly.
And, and to that end, I think, whatever the timing is, we need to make it a priority as a council that, you know, a good amount of time before then, we are at least annually updating whatever is that five-year plan, tracking where we're perhaps off of it. And that's where those KPIs come in super handy, is to know, "Well, okay, we deviated. Maybe there was good reason for that, but we deviated. Are we still in line with our goals? Do we need to update our goals to be more in line with where we are forced to go?" So I, I almost feel like when I was reading this, that, you know, some of these things, we need to either change the language on, because it sets, I think, a false expectation that, "Okay, we've made a five-year plan, we don't have to visit again until, you know, we get to year five, and then we'll make a new five-year plan." Other times I looked at some of these things and I thought, "Wait a minute, that's, that's an agenda item. That's not a five-year plan." You know, reviewing the city's logo and potentially including the river in it, that's an agenda item. That's, let's get that out of there. Like, let's clean it up and make it easier, I think.
So Wendy, you were shaking your head over there. No, but, but this is, this is, this is part of it, because one of the things that, that I get, that I'm concerned about, and I vocalize this before, is, is using technology to, to develop and, and maintain or evaluate and track data points. So, and, and I'll use example, not to pick on, on Scott, but, you know, community development and, you know, when we're talking about this need for a second person within, within that, that department, it would be great if we had data points to be able to back up, we know we need one, but to be able to say, "Okay, we're behind X days on, you know, inspections, or we have, you know, this many new, new permit applications," or whatever. And to be able to go back and get a snapshot of that on, on, you know, annual, monthly, quarterly, weekly basis is huge because then we can say, "Okay, we're catching up, we're falling behind, we've got lots of new permit applications, we need to do something." So those are, that's the thing, and my question is, is there stuff out there that we can use, that we can look at to be, help us be more efficient?
So we have had several internal discussions with staff about KPIs. And the question that I posed to them, I showed them an example of what another municipality was doing, and it was quite extensive, the data points that they were tracking. And what I said was, "Take a look at the data points that are being tracked in your particular functional area. Number one, is this information that is readily available to you utilizing the technology that you have available to you today? And then also, if there are data points that you think are directly linked to performance that you don't have a way of tracking today, is there some way of you being able to track those in the future?" Wendy, did you have something you wanted to add to that?
I was going to say, I think it's going to be based on department and exactly that when we talk about KPIs and technology. I think there are some areas of technology that we have moved forward and then others we just haven't had the financial ability to. I mean, I hate to say this, but in my own department, to give you an example, if I want a new hire report, I don't have the ability to do that electronically, believe it or not. It sounds crazy. And I have to call Todd Davis and say, "Hey, will you create me this new hire report?" So when I talk about KPIs for myself, everything is manual. And I, absolutely, I think KPIs are very important as long as they're, especially, I see it from an HR, Laura and I talked a lot about that, is when you talk about staffing to have many years of trend for you guys to kind of under, see where, you know, things have ramped up or whatever, the activity is heavier. But currently, right now, we've talked about an HRIS system, things like that, it's just they're, not in every department is it easily, readily available.
And I also don't want to make sure that we're not running like 18 different, you know.
That's the thing, I want, I want us to not get to the point where we spend as much time trying to figure out how we do everything that we do here and spend as much time on that as actually doing the things we need to do every day to run the city.
But you need process.
I, I know we do, and that's the thing, is just define the right amount of it so that we don't have somebody spending as much time trying to figure out how to generate us a report to tell us what they were doing as what they should be doing for the public or for the job that they have to complete.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, Alan. I certainly don't want, you know, our staff spending their time in report purgatory. But what I do hope is that by having this become a regular part of our process, it helps keep the focus on things that need to be and we stop spending time on things we don't need to be.
Right. And I think that that's part of what I feel like, building the strategic plan or changing the strategic plan to include certain things like that, to be able to quantify what we think are needs for the departments or what we think are desires from a policy side, to be able to get that to, I don't want to call it an enforcement stage, but an action stage to where it makes sense that we can set those goals, we can say we want to do that, and then their job to figure out how to get there and be able to track that performance to the point that we say, "You've attained the goal that we wanted."
Yeah, that's a good thing about what Laura was saying about searching out from other departments. That's the good thing now is this is the way of the world now. Data collection and finding all those data points are what every successful company is doing right now, but this is, it's been not really a factor in municipal life. And that's where I think people say, "Run, run municipalities like government or like a business." Well, you, it does not translate exactly. However, these small things such as measuring different departments are, and there are enough knowledge bases out there right now where we don't have to spend a lot of time recreating the thing, plug and play those things that are working in the private sector, in the public sector, the, those public sectors that are really successful with it. There are a lot of them out there. And the more that you do that, you can run data software programs that are out there that can get you the information that are concise, measurable, and to make sure that you know the expectations, that you're not throwing a whole bunch of data out there and then not knowing what you're measuring or measuring to measure. All of that has been eliminated in the past five years. That's gotten so much better that you just take those successes, plug them into where we are for what we're doing, and I think those things that we're kind of scared about or hesitant about don't necessarily exist anymore.
I think that's a good example of something that should be an objective in the, and part of the action plan, which is, all of this is kind of, in my mind, pointing to the need to really work at this because we don't have these things. You know, I agree that it needs to be more specific, things need to be prioritized a little bit more. I think we need to compare it to our comp plan a little bit so that we're working, you know, in the same, you know, parallel path. But I, so, you know, ask what we thought of this plan, you know, I do think it's a little bit too vague in some way when it comes to the objectives. There isn't an action plan, it's not really compared to the comp plan. But I, I think as much as anything, it's not that forward-looking. I think we need to look at where, what are the pressures that are happening in our society now and respond to that. You know, this is, these are, this is like kind of the basics of any city plan, but it's not quite there yet. You know, it's not, you know, and when we were interviewing some of these strategic planning groups, one example was the autonomous car. How are cities planning for that? And then, you know, I think with Sam's Club is a good example, how are we dealing with places like Amazon Prime and online shopping? How is that going to impact our planning? And I just don't think that we're thinking like that yet. I think we're more reactionary. And so I think that that's, to me, that's lacking here. And then, you know, the specificity, clear priorities, so, or clears, yeah, kind of priorities and goals so that we're all on the same page when we're making decisions. Because again, we're kind of reacting, I think, to political comments and, you know, we kind of forget that this is a priority. We've already established that this is a priority, so we need to support it. Or, you know what, we're not dealing with that for 10 years or whatever. So anyway, those are my thoughts. So I would- So, I would say that this conversation definitely shows that we need to prioritize strategic planning, because we really don't have the things that we're talking about, that we need.
I would add, the, while data collection is important, sometimes we get carried away, and coming from education, I can tell you, there are many, many, yeah, data, data collection projects that are sitting on a shelf. And I, I don't wanna see that happen, but I do wanna see, you know, data is important, but staying on track with what the plan is, and making sure the plan aligns with, with values, with, with the mission statement and what the values are. I've seen some very good plans that show a link from every action that's taken, so, here, so, every ordinance, every resolution, every memo for a discussion, should include what part of the plan, or multiple parts of the plan, and just listed there. And that, you know, that creates tremendous data to be able to look back, were we doing the things that we said our plan wanted to do? And we can, you know, you can quantify it with the, the number of items brought forward for each area. If you find areas, well, that doesn't align with the strategic plan, you know, maybe that can go to other for us to say, hey, we need to address this in the strategic plan. But some system in place where we're always, everything we do is looked at through the lens of the strategic plan, and that doesn't have to be a huge data collection piece, it's an, just an ongoing, you know, as a matter of fact, in this memo, this is addressing this goal. We should also, you know, the strategic plan should also clearly identify what values the goals, each goal is meeting. So, it's interconnected with each other, so. But I, I would agree with a lot of what Lucy says, it, it's not as detailed, it's not forward-looking, definitely agree with that.
Anybody else? Cause I think, I think in my mind, that one of the things I think we need to do next is to figure out, do we wanna attack this all at once? You know, we thought we were gonna bring somebody in and do that, if we can't do that, I feel like we at least need to review what we have, really, in the mission, vision, values, make sure that that's what we want to be there, and then build off of that, and again, force ourselves to go and say, okay, every other month, we're gonna have one meeting like this, where we go through this, and work on this to get it to where we want it to be.
And I'd say, the strategic plan is, is now, is broken up into a bunch of different sections. You know, financial, business development, retention, housing, you know. If those are the, are those even the right things going forward, do we need those? And if we agree those are the things to go forward, then, like, taking a meeting for a chunk, one section, because I think to try to do it just willy-nilly, here, there, everywhere, we're gonna be all over the place, but to know we're focusing on a particular section, and like, perhaps a meeting is, are these the right sections for our, our vision? Does the river deserve its own?
That's a great idea.
Yeah, there's six, if we do it every other month, it's gonna take us a year, so, I don't wanna wait that long. I don't know about everybody else, but that's just.
Maybe we can, maybe we can take two in one session.
Yeah, or once a month.
I would also add, though, we should think of this as a, as an ongoing process. It should never, you know, we shouldn't be done with it, you should never be done with our strategic plan, because we know things changing, things are changing at a faster and faster rate. So, we, we should have a strategic plan that's nimble, so to say, that, that, you know, we can decide, hey, this isn't where we're at today, we were there a few months ago, but maybe we should be able to modify and not say, well, we'll look at that, and when we come back in a couple of years, to look at the strategic plan again.
So, develop an annual strategic planning calendar, where something's happening.
Right. We've got six, every six months, we're gonna hit a new one, but we just gotta put it in the calendar and follow that.
Make sure we look at it one section.
Strategic goal number one.
Every section gets looked at at least once a year, right?
Well, I think, too, that's always been my thought, is that the, the comp plan was kind of an overreaching view of the way we, long-term, really far-reaching, and then the strategic plan was shorter-term, with goals and everything identified in it, and then really, there should be an action plan below that, that every year, there's the actions that you have, and that we go back and review and make sure that we've attained what we want, and what we don't, why, and how to rectify that.
Going off of what was said about each of these sections, we also, in, in us setting what the goals and the plans are, and what do we think are important, well, it has been now eight years since the last city survey, so how do we know what municipality as a whole wants, as are these the things that people want us to focus on? So, and, and it might not be the, the old city survey about things, but more targeted to what do you want us to work on? Because the past eight years has seen an exponential change in community structures, community finances, technology. All of those things have combined to, eight years has been way too long to understand what's really going on.
That's what these strategic planning firms help do, develop the surveys, develop the community meetings, develop the outreach. It's huge.
Yep.
And, you know, I, I agree, I mean, if we're gonna do it right, that's exactly what we should be doing.
And that's where I think, when, to your question, I think it was one of the last ones, are we taking it seriously? That was, I think, what everybody wanted to do at the budget, but for Sam's Club, where prioritizing is what we're doing. I think we're all in agreement on what we know needs to be done, and how it needs to be done. It's just, we probably would have been doing it, but for having to do the different prioritizations right now, that are out of our control. And that's the part that we have to be okay with being nimble, but knowing that it, and really knowing that it's temporary.
Yeah, I, I still question whether putting strategic planning off is, is the right thing to do. I mean, maybe after looking at this, we're gonna say, hey, well, you know, yeah, we have Sam's Club, but another company will probably come in there, there are new businesses happening all the time, new development. Maybe we need to prioritize that right now, and bring someone in and help us, because it's been too long.
And that's why I was thinking, when we were saying, they need time to adjust, and I don't think it's going to take as long to figure out, well, what's actually just bleeding into surrounding one, that we're not really losing, it's just transferring that money within the town. Are we still maintaining that, or do we have a larger problem? We just don't know at this point. So, it's figuring out that balance of going headstrong, but I think we're gonna have not a lot of necessary bleed off, we'll have some. But we're gonna make up in other areas, so there are opportunities out there for growth that we're seeing. And the good thing is, is this evaluation period, which is what we're doing, just, I think we're being smarter about it, is paying attention to what we're doing, so we don't get ourselves into a bigger hole, and then adjusting and adapting, and going right on to what we know we need to do. And that's the, that's the largest hurdle, is we always, well, we, we think we know what we need to do, but we don't. I think we're all on the same sheet of paper about what we need to do, it's just timing, and giving staff the opportunity to figure those things out, and they know the importance of it, because like I told Laura, I've been very impressed at how fast you moved, recognized, figured out solutions as best you could, or at least a plan, and that, in my mind, shows what we need to be doing.
You know, I agree with you, if we hadn't put this off for so many years already. So, you know, there's always something. So, I mean, when was the, we haven't looked at this in how many years? So, we could say, okay, yeah, now, Sam's Club came along, but you know what, in four months, something else is gonna happen. So, we're just gonna have to say, are we gonna do it or not?
Well, and, and I think, I think that's kind of playing the point of why we need to make this a regular thing, that we don't keep pushing off until we have the money to afford someone else, external, to come in and guide this process.
But sometimes you're gonna need that, you're gonna need to do the survey, you're needed to do the group outreach.
Well, all I'm saying is, once we get into a rhythm on this, if we're having a regular time of actually discussing these things, if we're doing our homework about, you know, looking at what Laura sent out about another, you know, municipality's strategic plan, we're gonna get good ideas. The ability to survey, and I agree, reaching out to people and getting their take on what the perception is, you know, that's become infinitely easier nowadays through social media, which is one of our strategic plans, to adopt social media and become stronger in that communication front. You know, we, we did that just for the art on the bridge, to figure out what was the popular opinion of all the different pieces. You know, we can do that through the website, we can do that through social media, there's a number of different ways we can do that. There are opportunities here that don't cost money, that we can start doing this, and making it a regular part of our function here, and then all of a sudden, you realize, oh, we're doing it.
Yeah, I kind of agree with most of what you said, but using, I think that there, you wanna make sure, I'm, I'm not a surveyor, but there, you know, certain methods in order, you need to employ to get the right, right research. You know, a lot of people aren't, the right data, a lot of people aren't on social media, they don't get on the website. So, you know, I, I think that's when we need to step out, and I'm not saying use a professional every year, but maybe every five years, or, you know, to go through the process fully.
Maybe when this, this process, we can begin ourselves with the review of the vision, mission, values. Look at what our current environment is by doing this SWOT analysis. Utilize that information to go through these topics, and maybe adjust what this is. But at some point this year, when we have a better idea of the effect on our budget, maybe where we put our resources is into that consultation with the community, and all of those different aspects of our community, and have somebody who is a professional at eliciting the type of information, like you say, on which decisions should be based.
So, I hear a lot of good things. But one of the, there's, there's two concepts here. One, one, as a business owner, there's, there's a difference between working in your business, and working on your business. And I think we, as a council and everybody else, we can get, it's real easy just to get into the day-to-day, and dig into the weeds, and, you know, and all of a sudden, you look up and it's a bunch of time. So, we really need to sit down and establish some key dates and milestones of what we wanna do with this. And granted, we don't, we don't have the money to, to bring probably the people in that we want to right now. But we can start, to your point, reviewing this, Drew's point, looking at these sections, coming up with some general overarching parameters that we wanted, that we wanna deal with. But we need to put a timetable with this, as opposed to, hey, here's what we should do. Great, but we need to be held accountable to it. So, we need to come up with a game plan, month one, we're gonna deal with this, month two, we're gonna deal with this, month three, we're gonna deal with this, and then, you know, we can, maybe after the first quarter, we reevaluate where our dollars-wise, if we wanna look and bring somebody in. I do think we need to, at some point, there's no question, but that doesn't mean we can't start. And we, and, and like anything, when, you know, if, if I don't schedule the time to work on my business, whether it's reviewing strategy for the year, or, or whatever it might be, it doesn't get done. Pure and simple, won't get done. And the business of the community will just swallow it up. And, and that's, I mean, it, that's good stuff, it's all good stuff. We have to be very intentional about carving out time to be able to do this, because it will benefit everyone in the long run.
Can I make a suggestion, that we take a look at the vision, mission, values, and SWOT analysis at another meeting in February? That we take two items, two sections of the strategic plan, each month thereafter. At one meeting, we'll deal with two sections.
I, I think that's a great idea, I think we do need to spend some time deciding if these are the right sections, like Drew said. So, I don't know if that's part of what you're saying.
Maybe that's part of that first meeting?
Uh-huh.
The vision, mission, values.
It's a lot to get in there, but maybe.
And sections, maybe there's one more meeting.
Yeah.
If I can com, just comment on what Scott said, and agree with it, but bring it one step further. Often, just in, in listening to what we're talking about, we, we get into the habit of saying we should do, or we should look at, or we should do. It's not only putting it on the calendar, but saying, what are we gonna finish that night? So, put that on the calendar, and say, we are going to walk out with it divided into six categories, or whatever it is, and put, put the number down on the, on the agenda, we could always change it, but if we have a goal and objective at every meeting, we will meet it. We can sit here and talk in circles like this, I, we've done it for five years, since I've been here, and say we should, we should, we should, but until you put the timeline down, but put objectives with it, it's not gonna get done.
Smart goals.
I'll see it and raise it. Not only that, have, have that agenda item out there, and be prepared to talk about it. Let's not just start thinking about it that night. If we, if we wanna come out of there with six, six sections, come into it, having done your homework, you know, thinking about it, having, you know, having some input, as opposed to just, oh, let's talk about that tonight.
So. Can, can we walk out of here today with the six sections? Let's, let's divvy them up right now.
Could we do our?
Yes, Lucy, can I help you?
Can we do our SWOT analysis first, before we do that? I mean, I think we need that information, I don't know how good we're gonna be at doing the SWOT analysis, but I think we need to, I mean, we can't just pick the section without knowing what we should be addressing, what the weaknesses are, what the strengths are, and that sort of thing.
Well, I'll just counter that, with, with my only concern is, this is part of it. Like, SWOT analysis, it, it's hard to, if you, let's walk out with exactly what we're gonna do in that analysis, and make objectives, I would agree with you.
With the SWOT analysis?
We need to walk out of here with a goal and objective of some sort, that's measurable, and say, yeah, we accomplished that, and it could be as soon as.
Of all the things, I think the SWOT analysis has the most defined objectives. I mean, I think there's just a way to do it, I mean, it's my experience, so if we're gonna do it, we're gonna know how we're gonna, we, we know how we're gonna do that.
So, I think a methodology for accomplishing that at our next meeting would be to send out to all of you, for you to do an individual analysis of where, and then everybody brings their homework together. Or, even better, prior to the meeting, you can send that to me, I will put it into one document, that people can then reflect on what others have presented as the SWOT analysis. Sound good? And then, at that following meeting, we can decide upon, here's, here's the information that we brought together as a SWOT analysis. What is, and then we're, we're not gonna leave the meeting without deciding what our categories are.
Perfect. You can, you can run that almost like an agile coffee session, if you want. I mean, if everybody submits a bunch of ideas, we put them on a post-it pad, and then you get three votes, or six votes, whatever it is. And whichever ones have the most votes at the end, guess what? That's your six categories, and it's fifteen minutes done.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
If it has to be six.
So, I'm confused, so we're gonna, at the same meeting, we're gonna have the categories, or after the SWOT analysis?
We're gonna have done the homework on the SWOT analysis, and present that, the collective information. The collective information will be provided to you prior to you coming to the meeting, so that you'll have had time to digest what others have put into their SWOT analysis, and then from, we'll utilize that information to do the coffeehouse exercise of the pads, and that's where you're saying, based upon the SWOT analysis, this, this seems like an important category for us to di, to determine objectives for. Does that sound like a good plan? I like it.
Plan, we got an objective, we got a timeframe.
This is crazy, I don't even know.
What city is this? What's happening? Richard?
No, thanks, I'm, I am so excited to engage in this process, I just think it's gonna make us a lot better, a lot more focused. And as you said, I think it's gonna make that budget process easier. When we get there, we'll realize what resources we need to allocate in, in order to accomplish the things we need to.
That's what I got, when I was reading through this, about the third time I read through it, I'm like, you really have all this here? We only used like, two things out of each section, over the last five years. And I mean, you look at it, and think, okay, yeah, it's all important, but what do we really focus on here? What, what are we actually?
What, what are we actually using from each section? And I think, that's the thing, I think when we go through these, that's what we're going to do. I think they're going to trim down, the focus is going to be different, and much more concise, I think, is what everybody wants. Or what I'd like to see.
Get the agenda items out of there. I'm wondering, whatever happened with the investigation of 2015 is the year of the neighborhood?
We have five, three more years.
We're still investigating.
All right.
Investigation.
We're waiting for a dossier.
It's kind of a cold case.
Simonian hasn't paid for it yet.
Oh, man. I had to.
I think good work was done here.
I actually feel pretty good about this, we actually did something. Happy to be part of this plan.
Good job, Alan. Yeah.
Put it out for the next meeting.
So, you're going to be gone that month? Okay. What do we have next?
Um, this is one of those weeks when projects I gave yesterday, so, um, if there's any other projects that you want to ask me about, I'd be happy to expound upon.
Storm Edge, Stanis.
It's still up.
Okay. Because nobody's asked about it in a while.
Thank you, though, right, right, I appreciate it. Once it went up, no, everybody stopped asking about it, I was so disappointed.
You had mentioned Sierra Trading Company, or Sierra Trading Post. What about Dollar Tree that's going in there, um, the other restaurants that are going in? Do we have dates for those? I know we had one for Sierra.
Um, the only other one that I know of a date for is early March for Casa del Pescatore, which is the old, the range up at the top of the hill there. So, that's early March.
And then, there was the burrito place. I know that I've seen a lot of where they've done the exterior work.
Don't have a date on that one.
Okay.
Yeah, nor do I have a date on, um, the furniture store or Dollar Tree.
Our reporter asked me last night, a couple of times, what did the council learn from the campana? Experience? And I, I don't know. And she said, well, are you going to talk about it? You know, no one is, it was never brought up. And, um, someone said, well, it'll probably come up at a cow meeting, because the city council wouldn't be the place to talk about it. So, I don't know if there's anything that's worth rehashing on that, or, um, whether everyone's good.
I, I answered her, and I just said, well, we learned that there's a process to everything, and sometimes it works in one favor and not the other. But, I mean, that's what, I don't know if there was anything that went wrong with that. It is what it is, and if you're asking, if they weren't asking for variances, it would have gone through. But they have variances, you need.
It wasn't variance, exactly.
Well.
Modifications.
Yeah. And the, but, a certain percentage of neighbors, if they decide, if, if they can challenge it, they can challenge it. And then, we need to override it with a greater support, and we didn't have it. So, I mean, I think it all, I mean, it's not what I voted for, but the process worked.
Worked the way it's supposed to.
Right.
Yeah, but this wasn't, it, it wasn't completely new, because we had the same thing with the Meisner, uh, property that was out at where Prairie Commons is going in now. But that was the same sort of thing, there was a lot of back and forth, there were a lot of, didn't know which way it was going to go. It was this way, that way, there were things that could have changed, there were things that couldn't have changed. There was no final vote as to what was going to happen, because we heard a lot of things that were going to come forward from Meisner, but we never actually saw anything, and they decided they wanted to pull it. And we didn't have a, a debrief on that. And that was probably just as contentious, if not even more, even within our own community, that the, the what did we learn on that one didn't really, I think it went kind of like the way it always is. Well, if it was meant to be, it was meant to be, and that's with any plan that goes forward.
Didn't we address the heart attack test with that one? Didn't we say, hey, maybe we, wasn't that the one where?
Yeah, that, that was the one where we kind of said.
Establish that.
It instituted the, led to the, the formal resubmit.
Yeah, I think we did kind of learn a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, but it didn't, that didn't really necessarily change anything, because when I look back at that initial test, a lot of those concerns were presented, were the still at the end of the day. So, did anything actually change from when we had that first meeting? It had everyone saying, yes, we're very interested in hearing from you, which is a lot of what a lot of people, I'm always going to say, if you're bringing a plan to us, I am probably never going to say, no, don't bring that to me, because I don't have all of the information at that point. So, a heart attack test, or any of those things for me, is kind of worthless, because you're asking me to kind of pre-make up my mind about what I'm thinking when I don't have all the facts. So, I will always take the, the tact that if someone is presenting to us, and they want to spend the time, money, and effort, and that's on them, if they're willing to do it, I am more than willing to hear them out. But at any point, we all still have to be able to reserve our rights, even if you're initially very excited about whatever is initially presented. If it's not at the end, what the final vote is, people have to be okay with either changing that in their own hearts, or to let other people on council make those changes too. Because we all have our own 14 voices, and if we're respecting each other, I respect someone's decision to stick through a process, and I respect someone if they change their minds too. On that.
I'm sorry, I don't think the developer was upset with, with that. They, they took, they know the heart attack test is, has some risks, but they're like, okay, this wasn't, like, we turned on them and.
Right.
You know, they, they knew kind of where we stood, and we stayed consistent.
Saying, okay, coming up with a procedure, so that developers wouldn't have to invest so much, wouldn't have to both time and money when they came to the city, so they'd get, and now I, I can't put my hands on the, what the procedure is. But so, they, they just get a better, um, a little more business friendly approach, where they get a better idea of where they stood with the city, and weren't told six months later, you know what, it's not going to work. So, I, and I thought we tried to address that in the, um.
The fact of the matter is, the last vote that this body took was a strong majority in favor of it. That's the reality, and you, you mentioned about the last vote, uh, where we stood. That's where this council stood, was strongly in support of it. Now, there was some opposition, and, and I get it, the rules, the rule of law is there, that procedure was used, I get that. However, I got to tell you, it's a very bad taste in my mouth, when here we are committed to serving on this, this board, and you would think a majority rules, and a strong majority, but I get that, it's not there. But the piece that sticks in my craw is the, uh, how deceptive it was. Mr. Burns, he knew full well what he was, uh, trying to do there, and he was arguing against the very things that he would have needed for his project. The traffic, the children, you know, I, I don't, you know, there, there was, and, and I don't mean to say that everyone that was in opposition, was deceptive, I think there was good arguments. I chose, you know, you have to, that's what our, our job is, to weigh the arguments and, and make decisions. And, and I respect people that are different, if they're honest with me. But when it's, when, when the information is left out, and real motives are found out later, I really think that we got, we got played, and, uh, and that's how I feel about it. I feel we gave up the, the ability to determine our fate to others that were operating deceptively.
If we go back to the original meeting, when they did the presentation, I'd have to look at the minutes or watch it again, but I think almost every single one of us had said, yeah, I have an issue with the parking, though. Everybody said it, so, just about. Um, you weren't here. So, that was something that was very consistent, and it's something they never bent on. So, that, I think that's part of what comes out there, is your ability to say, hey, it looks interesting, I have these concerns. Then they should be coming back, addressing those concerns. If they don't choose to address those concerns, that's on them, that's not on us.
I would say that would be my one biggest frustration out of that, was the statement that Locke made after, we've taken into consideration all the input that everybody had, and, but if we don't need those votes, we're just going to leave it alone. We know we could make it better, and we could address those concerns.
He did not say better.
He did.
He said he was listening, and he was making changes to the plan.
To accommodate the things that were brought up as issues with the plan.
But I don't know that he felt they were necessarily better, he was trying to get it through.
But when he said he could change the plan and make it, address those things that were brought forward during the process, only if he needed it for the vote. That was a frustration for me.
I understand, one of the things that I thought maybe is, we probably will deal with affordable housing, low income housing again, to maybe, um, go over fair housing issues and things like that as a council, so that it's like really height of mind when we're having these discussions. So, you know, we're a little bit more careful about what we can talk about, whether we can talk about families and kids, and, you know, and, um, that sort of thing.
But I don't think anybody did anything or said anything wrong.
I don't think anybody.
I don't, I don't remember us ever going that route. I, I, I would just like to say, I mean, I, I hear you on the misinformation. I'm not going to call out anyone individually. I think people had intentions, whether good or bad, I don't know. There was a lot of, um, good information out there, but there's also a lot of bad information out there. At the end of the day, what I learned was, you know, or at least what I tried to focus on, you know, with, with how that played out, did we as a council adhere to the process? Did we respect the process? Did we make decisions along the way for the right reasons? You know, you're right, there was a majority vote in favor of that project. And there was a time when that could have been the recorded vote. It was delayed because I thought was a good reason, to hear more from the community, to make sure that people had a chance to express whatever questions or information, right or wrong, you know, but we wanted to make sure as a council that we were listening to the public. And I thought that was worth supporting. It turned out that time did make the difference, because lo and behold, before we got to the next session, then we had the formal petition against it, but, uh, or protest, excuse me.
I would say in that time period, there're no, there wasn't significant new information that came out.
I'm not saying there was or wasn't.
You know, it was, you know, I guess, I just feel that the will of this body could not be, you know, but maybe it was because we drug our feet and did, and, and, you know, couldn't make that, you know, wanted to seek more information. I, I don't know.
So, I guess I, I'm going to interrupt you, I know you're about to talk, but, so the, yeah, the majority and the, the whole thing with the petition, regardless of petition.
Protest.
The protest, you have to do that, because what if someone decided they were going to put a hotel next to your property, and it's 25% of your order? You should be able to say, hold on a second, I don't want that there, even if, even if the majority of the city council wanted it.
I'm not arguing that law, and, and that, you know.
But so, it doesn't really matter if the will of the council, that law steps in and says, no, the will of the council has to be a little bit greater than initial.
And that's what I think, if there's any learning experience about it, is you must take the entire zoning code and know it. All of us have to know it. It was not some, uh, Armaic translated thing that was pulled out of the Dead Sea. It was number eight or number nine in the process, it's titled process. And if you go through the process to know what it is, it should have been known to all. And I think one thing that I hope community development does do going forward is informing any and all parties beforehand of what the ground rules are. Letting the developer know as part of the heart attack, well, here is where it's majority, but here, so that you can plan, and so that you know the expectations are, if there is. You're not setting anybody up for what we're, what I think you're feeling, is feeling like it was blindsided. It shouldn't be, that's being more open and transparent. It's letting everyone know, this is, this is where it is. And you know that if it's, if there is a protest, the protest will require this, and that's all you need to know. Because the other parts about, did he have ulterior motives, did he not? That is irrelevant. He could have, but there is nothing in that statute, and nothing in our zoning ordinance, that said he even had to have a reason. He only had to have 20% ownership. Anything beyond that is irrelevant. And then, knowing that he can have the best intentions, the worst intentions, we don't even have to judge that. That's taken out of our hands, because it's not put in there. But the mere fact that we know that it is a possibility is where we should leave it. Because the expectations, for me, were at that last meeting that we had, it was what Alan stated, we'll come back to you with some changes. We've, we've heard where you are. The things that were being said as what the concerns were, were the same concerns over time. And if you're listening the entire time, people can go from supporting the project to having concerns about the project. But for me, those concerns could have been mitigated by the developer coming back to us and saying, we'll put in the, the required parking, we'll spend the money, and we'll take the, the towers off, because that's treating it no different. If those things had happened, then what? Those were not, we stated over and over, this is how you can rectify it. He said he was going to listen, and that's the bad taste that's left in your mouth. We didn't even get to that point. And I, I can't force him to do those modifications, I can't force him to spend money if they don't want to, that's their decision.
I, I think one, one of the things that, that we learned, one, that the process did work. Did it work the, the way that some people wanted it to, maybe not? But there, a couple of things came out of it, and with, with our, the Shodene project too. And I, and I think for those watching, listening at home, one of the things that I want to underscore is just the ability to have a debate, um, about things, and, and walk away with a handshake. You know, whether, whether or not you won or lost, depending on what, you know, and that's, the thing that frustrated me is, it got, these things are getting really, really heated, really personal, and it's not, it's not personal. You know, we're trying to make the best decision, decisions possible. There's things that I voted for that have gone through, there's things I voted for that didn't go through, it happens. Someone asked me this morning, as a matter of fact, isn't, isn't it crazy to have 14 people on your council? I said, no, I don't think so, because I value everyone's opinion. Everyone comes from a different walk of life, everyone has different experiences, everyone brings something unique to the table. And, and, and has, and this, and it's been tough, we've had a couple of real tough projects in front of us, and I think everyone's contributed. And I value this group, I value what everyone brings to the table. And so, that, that's the one thing that I, I, that I like, uh, that I've learned, is that everyone here has integrity, everyone here really cares about this town, but everyone brings a little bit, something different to the table. So, I just, you know, there may be some, still hard, some hard feelings about this, it is what it is. And I think we should, we, we just need to go on to the next thing, we got, we got bigger things in front of this town that we have to deal with, and there always will be, there always will be.
I, I appreciate that, and, you know, I, I'm sorry if I come across, I am, I'm disappointed about it. But that's not to say that, um, uh, you know, given up that we're, we can agree to disagree. I think that's a, I, actually, that's one thing I've witnessed in being involved here, is that, that does exist, and there are cordial, uh, conversations, and, and, you know, I never walked away pissed at anyone. But, but I, and I guess I, maybe I, I said that, I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed, because we were so close to being able to achieve some of our strategic, strategic plan there, and it didn't happen. And the process did work, you're right, because we have laws in the book. I don't, I'm not arguing that.
And we are, we are still achieving that, we've got, we, we have affordable housing going in behind Walmart. So, there, I mean, there's, that is still being achieved, and again.
For seniors.
For seniors, sure, but, but the fact, but the fact is, it is still needed.
My disappointment, it's, it's more than just that strategic plan, I know of children that would have benefited from that, and are not going to benefit from it now.
Right.
So, for me, that's, that really upsets me.
Understand, and, and you know what, and if you're not passionate about this, then you're missing something. Because that's why we're on this council, we're not robots, we're here because we love this community. We're here because we love this community. And we get paid a ton of money to do it. So, you know.
Well, to your point on that, that's where I think that we're not night and day on this stuff. What one person sees as kids going there, what I'm thinking is, I wanna make sure when they come home, that there's places to park, and that they don't have to worry about those things that are there. So, we're talking about the same thing. I wanna make sure that what goes in there does work. We had a comparable situation where it, it will, everything always does work out. Whatever happens does work out in the end. We had the one parcel that is the, on Wilson, the, the tower, where the water tower was, that parcel. The person that wanted that, really wanted that. They wanted to put what they wanted to put in. It needed variances, so on, so forth. But, people had problems with it. The community had problems with it, people on this council had, and the majority did. And it went away. And I'm sure that person was very upset about what their dreams were for whatever they were wanting to put in there. But, then anon came another one. And while there were still some of the concerns, that next step modified it. And it modified it just enough that it still respected the uniqueness of that parcel. Because that's where we were told the entire time, look at the uniqueness of this parcel, but don't treat it any different than anything else. Those two kind of go against and conflict with each other. You're supposed to look at the uniqueness, but then you're supposed to not. So, how do you balance that? And those are the things that we're dancing on the head of pins on. What's really unique for one person is looking like you're not treating it equally in another situation. But, those things can be reversed in different scenarios.
I guess if I would say, if there's something that maybe we learned, and I think it's something I mentioned to you, Laura, at some point, that Chris needs to get in front of some of these stories too. A lot of feel-good stuff goes out on our website, but there's not enough stuff when the, when the flames start going on Facebook, that there's not something in there saying, hey, this is the process. This is why we're talking about this. No, it's not shut down. Whatever it happens to be, because there was so much misinformation and negativity, if we could've gotten in front of that. And I know several of us tried at points to be like, whoa, you got this wrong. And.
To get reality out there.
It, but we, as a city, need to say, what, however we're doing that, put something out there, hey, there's a lot of conversations going around, this is the facts. And even if that thing gets posted every couple of weeks.
And I think we need to direct them back to where they can learn the facts, if they want to. Because there's always this.
Funny that don't.
What do you call when you only will accept information as true if it conforms to your point of view? And that's why we try to, more so with any other project than we've ever done. There was so much information. Go check out the Campana site on our webpage. It has all the documents that ever existed. And then we also created the email list where we would push out information to them. I think it's why nobody showed up, because Anthony sent an email message out to his hundreds of people on his email list that, that had been withdrawn. So, I do agree. And I think that that's where this Meltwater is going, this new software that, that we have is going to help, because it's hard to know when those conversations are going on. But, using Meltwater, we can have some key words where, oh, it'll come up in our feed that certain matters are being discussed. And then we can point them back to a source of information if they choose to educate themselves.
If I can jump in on that too. If people have a question, come to a council meeting. If you really wanna understand what's going on, ask one of us. Call us. Our phone numbers are on the website. Send us an email. We'll respond. That, going back to what we learned with all this, we, we like, we will engage. Discuss with us. This is, we're, we're, we're a community of relationship. We don't, you know, we don't really react to people just coming in and shoving it down our throats. Have a discussion with us. Everyone that's out there, if you have, have a thought, we have a time at every meeting for you to bring something up that's not on the agenda. And if it is on the agenda, you can speak about it too. So, but that, the point is, we wanna engage. We're here for the community, whether you're a citizen, or developer, or whomever. It's a discussion. It is, it's, it's, it's a living document.
I would, I would definitely second that, but I would also add, we had just as much personal vestment in these decisions. We aren't living in some far-off township. I, I know I was talking with plenty of neighbors and, and people that were not my neighbors, you know, in the neighborhood, or certainly, obviously, in, in adjacent communities. You know, we're here. That, that's how we get to sit on this bench, is we have to have lived here. So, the, the conception that, you know, we are removed from the area where this is impacting, you know, that's, that's just a falsehood. That's not true. I think we need a hug.
Carl loves number four.
And, and, you know, and we have different constituents too.
Yep.
You know, in my ward is a different demographic than other wards.
Yeah.
And, and there were more children in my ward that would benefit from, from some, a project like that. And so, I, that point well taken.